All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council of November twenty, twenty twenty-two. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
McAdams? Verbic?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Seven I.
Just so everyone knows, Alderman McAdams did reach out to me and let me know that he wasn't gonna be able to make it tonight. Pledge of Allegiance, can we have Mr. Hyvee come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, Approval of the Agenda. I take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Smith.
Seconded by Alderman Larson.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
All right. The agenda has been approved. Moving on to D, Presentations. We have none. Number E, or letter E, Public Participation. We have none. Mr. Neerad, I understand you'll speak at Agenda Item J-1. Moving on to F, Appointments. We have none. And then moving on to Agenda Item G, Approval of the Minutes. The only minutes we have are the minutes submitted by the Recording Secretary, which are the minutes of the regular city council meeting of November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Recording Secretary?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Favor. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
The minutes have been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item H, the Consent Agenda. Number one, Accounts Payable and Payroll through November twenty-eighth in the amount of $4,082,358.88. Number two, Freedom of Information Act FOIA Report, October twenty twenty-two. And number three, Compliance Reports for the year end, year ended December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, DeKalb Firefighters Pension Fund and the DeKalb Police Pension Fund. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
The consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda number, or letter I, Public Hearings. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing at six oh-three, and this is a public hearing regarding the proposed FY twenty twenty-three budget. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak to this item? Hearing none. City Manager, anything?
Mayor, I'll wait till we get to the ordinance.
Okay. Council, anything for discussion? All right. Hearing none. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at six oh-three. All right. All right, moving on to Considerations. Number one, Consideration of Public Possible Uses for the Remaining American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Fund Monies. Can I have a motion to bring it before the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Verbic. We do have Alex Neerad, who is going to speak. Alex? And Alex, I'll remind you, you got three minutes, my friend.
Good evening. You know, Stagecoach Players and the Egyptian Theater have clearly shown the need for support as we continue to recover from the pandemic. The support for this request has been substantial from both the business community and individuals across DeKalb. But at this point, there isn't really any more information that we could provide. We've provided a ton of information about both the cultural impact, the financial impact, the need. Have provided a ton of information. So I don't think there's much more that we can provide at this point that adds value. So we've worked with City Manager Nicholas to come up with a compromise to hopefully move this forward, and I'm sure he'll talk in more detail about that. But part of that is, the Egyptian Theater has agreed to reduce our funding request from seventy-five thousand to fifty thousand dollars in order to try and move forward with a comprehensive list of things to use the remaining ARPA funds. So, moving forward with this proposal gives the council an opportunity to show the community and DeKalb stakeholders near and far, the council listens to the community and is willing to come to a compromise and move forward. So tonight, on behalf of the Egyptian Theater and Stagecoach Players, we're asking for council's support in moving forward with the funding request that we've made for the ARPA funds. And I'm here to answer any questions that might be. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The background for tonight's meeting, is this on? You hear me? Okay. Identifies how ARPA funds have been used to date. And as you know, and as we have discussed this over the last couple of years, a good part of the initial expenditures were to fill holes in the city's budget, some four and a half million dollars worth of losses from that period, from March of two thousand twenty into two thousand and twenty-one. And also, there have been monies dedicated through our water fund to lead service replacement. And a good amount of money was spent in the AGN neighborhood, in particular, on what's become known as the old Hunter Hillcrest property and the adjacent property going up along Black Hawk. And so we were at that point a couple months ago, when council members reasonably asked, what's, what's the accounting at this point, Nicholas, and what do we have left of the ten million-plus dollars that would be available? And, and there will be no more ARPA funds. We are sure of that. So that accounting is in your, in the council background tonight. It was also in, in a background a couple meetings ago. In addition, I have in the background for tonight's meeting identified those requests that had come to the council, plus some other areas where funds could be spent. We didn't have specific proposals for that, but, except that, apart from the, the Egyptian, the Stagecoach, and the Glidden-Homestead requests, others were identified in conversations and have not yet been proven out in way of bids or to identify actual costs. But these are our best guess at cost for these various, various things. And as I pondered how this might be presented tonight, and what, what I might present to the council tonight, over the holiday, the long holiday weekend, I, I felt that I had probably been in error in not just suggesting a, a starting point for conversation, a target, if you will, for you all to, to aim at, whether you liked it or not. And so I have done that at your places tonight, and I have some extra copies for people who would like to see where I'm going. I have proposed the following for your consideration tonight. And this is a short list. It includes some non-for-profits. It also includes still a healthy allocation for the AGN neighborhood. A, a grant of fifty thousand to the Egyptian, which is, as Alex said earlier, a twenty-five thousand dollar reduction. Twenty-five thousand for the Stagecoach Players. As far as repaving of Greenbrier Road is concerned, I think we can find alternatives for that particular price, the two hundred and fifty thousand, from CDBG monies, although I can't speak for HUD or the federal government at this point. We were able to get permission to use ARPA funds and, or, excuse me, CDBG funds for the Edgbrook work, and also for the sidewalk along Annie Glidden Road, north of Twombly, up to Dresser. So I think some portion of that, even if half of that was available, we might be able to find from some city capital funds the balance to do that. To incentivize a community center-
Real quick, Bill, I'm sorry. Leave the incentivize community center in AGN to the last piece, and we'll have Pastor Mitchell come up and talk about that for a little bit.
But as you can see, there was, there was consideration of that. When I say upgrading of transit stop on Black Hawk, there was some discussion, we've been talking about the Transit Center, about doing something along Black Hawk that is more than just that six-foot-long transit shelter, which isn't that much of a shelter in really cold weather or really inclement weather. So something that, that might be more substantial, and that could be overstated or could be understated. I thought it was plausible. Upgrading street lighting and cameras in AGN. So we did that a couple years ago, and we did that with CDBG money. But we didn't do the whole area. We just did a couple of streets, and we took advantage of solar power, and, and, and that, that's good. But there are a lot of still dark streets in, in the AGN neighborhoods. We thought that would be useful. And then, again, the Glidden Barn. So the total of all, all these, in my proposal to you tonight, is three hundred and fifty thousand, which is within a few bucks of what we estimate are, as we sit here tonight, what our remaining funds are in the ARPA fund. So that is what's before you, and I welcome any questions you may have.
Awesome. I did invite Pastor Mitchell up here to talk about the New Hope. Well, the project, the New Hope Baptist Church, is going to hopefully be able to execute on, but I have no doubt that they're gonna be able to. So Pastor Joe, would you come up and just kind of brief us on what you're thinking about? And Jeff, would you mind bringing up the architectural? Perfect. Read my mind.
Excuse me. Bowel sinus infection. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joseph Mitchell. Serve as the pastor of New Hope Missionary Baptist Church in DeKalb, Illinois, which is on Twombly Road, which is found in the AGN neighborhood. In July, we celebrated thirty-five years of, of ministry here in DeKalb. Twenty-two of those have been in AGN. Sixteen years ago, as part of our strategic plan as a church, we did a community needs assessment, and the information that came back overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly from the community was the need for additional covered space in AGN. At the time, we were about five years into a one-point-six-million-dollar mortgage to build the church, and so financially, we were not in a position to engage in that at the time. Two years ago, three years ago, we paid off the remaining balance that we owed for the mortgage, and quickly started diving into the information that we had as related to additional space. So one of the first things we did is we entered into a pre-construction agreement with, remember the names, Schramm Construction, which is in St. Charles, and Next Level Architect, which is in Geneva, to start dreaming out loud and start whittling down to see what we really could do in AGN to bring covered space to the community. When we built the church, we bought ten acres of land. We've only developed about three and a half acres. So we have six and a half acres behind the church, which we went out to a farmer that we own, that we can build this community center on. And our goal really is to build a space that is holistic and intergenerational. We know what's going on in AGN, and as a congregation, I think we've proven ourselves for the many years that we've been there, that we want to be part of the solution and not part of the problem. And so we are ten toes down engaging in building this community center. That would not just be for AGN, but it would be for the whole community as well. And so this is where we are right now with the project. It's about a little over eleven thousand square feet. Just had another meeting with the architect and the contractor on, a week ago. From today, we have another one scheduled in about three weeks. They have civil engineers coming in as part of the next step to make sure that this is possible, test the soil, look at the building, water, electricity, all those fun things that have to take place with an undertaking like this. So the plan is to have an estimated cost sometime in January. The contractor has been very tight to the vest, not giving us any estimates. He wants to really put everything out to bid, so we have a realistic number on what it would cost. Talking to some other contractors and architects outside of the ones that we're working with, they're estimating this project's gonna be somewhere between two and three million dollars. So we've already got the state approval done. We are working on the federal approval for a new 501(c)(3) entitled Project HOPE. HOPE is an acronym that stands for Health, Opportunity, Purpose, Empowerment, and Education. And that 501(c)(3) would be the governing body of this community center. Yes, it would be attached to the church, but as you can see, there's a very clear line of demarcation between the actual community center and the church. So things can be going on simultaneously at both places, and it would not affect either activity that's going on. So what you see is a full-size gym that you can run basketball games across, two games at the same time across, as well. A full-size industrial kitchen, two specific classroom, classrooms, and then a very large multipurpose space that we haven't landed yet, what that space would be used for. But we want to leave our options open to whatever the need is in the community. Also, there's going to be roughly, as of right now, about eight hundred square feet that will be above as well, that will be available. There's conversation right now that we open that space up and let it be office space for small business incubators, where they can have a desk, telephone, to get small businesses or non-for-profits started. Because many times, as you know, you need a place to launch, to get going, and we would like to provide that space if we're able to make that second level work. I'm here to answer any questions you all may have.
So Pastor Mitchell, we met with him, Bill and I, oh, two, three, four weeks ago, and he brought us up to speed on this. The reason I'm particularly interested in it is during the listening sessions that Opportunity Calp put on, the number-one recurring theme you keep hearing about is community center, community center, community center. We need more things for youth to be able to engage in. I've heard it from individuals in AGN and different meetings and activities that I've gone to. And then the thought, so, so the idea of a community center is great, but then how do you actually implement a community center? Who's gonna run it? Who's gonna, who's gonna make sure day-to-day that programming happens, that the roof gets repaired when it's leaking? Who's gonna be responsible ultimately for something like that? And when Pastor Mitchell presented what they were doing, as, as you mentioned, Joe, you have a phenomenal track record. The church has just been a staple in that community, and has done a wonderful job being in that community and being present in that community. For me, when you look at, if there's any issues whatsoever, there's a whole congregation that's gonna lean in to make sure that the success of this community center is gonna be there. My confidence level is through the roof on them being successful, not only construct, raising the money, not only constructing it, but then also in the operations itself. So I, I felt that, from the city DeKalb standpoint, this is what the community has been wanting and what the community needs. And I thought it was a perfect opportunity for the city to be able to lean in and contribute and help with a small part of the fundraising that's gonna be required. But just to lean in and make sure that, that neighborhood knows that we, we were out there, we listened, we heard, and we're gonna put our money where our mouth is and make an impact. So appreciate that. And any questions for Pastor Mitchell at all, before we move into our conversation?
I can add, can add too. I'm not sure if it's, if they're both for Pastor Mitchell or some for, for Bill. I guess, first one is, what's the timeline for the ARPA funding? Do we have to have it allocated by a point, spent by a point?
Spent by the end of twenty-four.
So we have to, we have to write checks by the end of twenty twenty-four, right? So we've got two years to ascertain what we want to do with this, and then, then do it. And then, secondly, what's your timeline for when you see dirt starting to move?
Yep. As a congregation and as a new 501(c)(3), we'll engage in a capital campaign starting in twenty twenty-three. Our hope, our hope is within three years, we'll be either under roof, or we will be completely done with the project.
So do you think you'll see dirt moving in twenty twenty-four?
That would maybe be a little optimistic. If you wanna cut us a big check, we can get that thing, we can get dirt moving probably in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem. Any other questions for Pastor Mitchell? All right, we might call you back up again, possibly. Thanks, Joe. All right, so Bill spent part of his holiday weekend coming up with this package for us that, you know, basically, there's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars uncommitted monies left with ARPA. And the way he laid it all out, we could sit here and vote right now, approve it, and we can move on to the next agenda item. I've had multiple of you communicate that you wanted to have a conversation about, do we focus on, this money is gonna go towards infrastructure? This money's gonna go towards public safety? This money's gonna go towards AGN? And I'm gonna open it up a little bit from that perspective, so we can make sure all voices are heard, that want to be heard, on how do we want to allocate these particular funds? So I guess the first question, well, I'm gonna open it up from there. Is there anyone that just wanted to talk about how we should be strategic on the remaining three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ARPA money? Alderman Larson.
I think when we look back on some of the issues we're dealing with now, we look back and say, the city got out of, out of balance. We didn't look at all the areas, and then all of a sudden, AGN, it was like, oh, my gosh, you know, we should have been paying more attention. And so the one lesson I want to learn from that mistake is that we're constantly trying to balance the city, the services, whatever it is, and not forget until there's another squeaky wheel that we've forgotten about. And, and I look at the ten point four million, and how much has gone into the AGN, AGN area, which I think every penny we've allocated so far is absolutely needed. But I, and, and I look at some of the services that AGN could, could use, but then I look at people on the south side or downtown, and, and I do realize that some of these other requests for some of this last ARPA money also supports them. It supports safe passage. It supports the LGBTQ group of people. And, and so I just want to be sure that we try to, in our minds, have a pie chart of what this ten point four, and, and look at it, some of the ways, safety and what have you, but also areas of the city, that, that we don't get too much in the northwest corner, or to, you know, that we're also addressing other people. And I think, I think that's why I'm still, I love what Pastor Joe was talking about doing. I think it will be needed, and I think we do need to support it over the next coming years. But I also feel to support groups that are, are supporting our city and are never on the, you know, they're not some of the twenty non-for-profits that get a check from the city every year, and some of the bigger ones that add up to a hundred and five thousand each year. So to keep it in balance, I'm still gonna want to put the Egyptian hat in the ring. I know that surprises the hell out of you.
Alderman Verbic.
And for me, I really don't feel any differently than I did a few weeks ago. What is the justified need? And I just, I feel like, to Alderman Perkins's point, when do we have to decide to write the checks? When do we have to spend the money? Well, the, this is part of the reason why I wanted to wait last time, was look what's come about just since last time from a standpoint of justified need. And again, thank you, City Manager, for, for putting this together. So absolutely, as an alderman in Ward Six, if I'm listening to those I serve, many have spoken up about a community center that would serve our northwest area of the city, time and time again. And it's been many, many years. It's beyond just these recent listening sessions. This planning and discussion has gone on for twenty years. So my job is to listen, and it's definitely in support of a community center. And to the mayor's point, the last meeting, these other ideas of update, upgraded transit stops and street lighting and cameras, absolutely. That's what we've, we've been discussing all along about these funds, and how do we improve the city of DeKalb for everyone? Yes, these wants are absolutely justified. But from a standpoint of needs to the entire city of DeKalb, I'm at a point where the things I just listed, yes, I'm likely ready to move forward with, but then the remaining balance stays put. We get more ideas, perhaps, from our city manager or other council members, and see what happens over the coming months.
Other questions? I'm always waiting for, because sometimes you're like, all right. Yes, Alderman Morris.
So I've been listening to Pastor Joe Mitchell's congregation's plan for this community center for years, it feels like. And it feels certainly like a significant value added to the community, and it feels like it actually hits multiple needs at once. So, you know, I think that an investment in that community center is an investment in safety in the AGN area. So I am, I'm fully in support of this entire list. I like where we're going with this. I guess a question that I have is, I see there's this total uncommitted, and that's the balance of the six fifty. It's that three hundred and forty-nine thousand total uncommitted. So I'm assuming the thought there is caution and conservatism to see what the needs become as time goes on?
It's, it's not like in addition to, so the total uncommitted was about three fifty, just a little under that. And so my list was a shuffling of various uses with that one source, actually with two sources, because I threw in CDBG to try to, to make up for the difference. And so we got to three hundred and fifty, so almost exactly what the uncommitted ARPA monies are right now.
Okay, so this, the recommended list fully utilizes it?
That I recommended.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, the request is doubled, six fifty is what the requests are. We can only afford three fifty of that.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I fully support this entire recommended list, seeing that Egyptian Theater gets some, Stagecoach Players gets some, repaving, lots of infrastructure investments here, upgraded street lighting, all of this seems perfect to me.
Anything else, counsel? Alderman Larson?
Just a statement. It's rather ironic. The reason we're having this discussion and that we found out the money's almost gone is the Egyptian Theater asking. So I just, just a little ironic statement there, that we wouldn't, we wouldn't have had this if they hadn't come and said, hey, what happened? We had requested some of this ARPA money a year ago and haven't heard anything. Where, where are we at? And so I was like, oh, I'll check into that. So I, I just think it's ironic that whatever other groups get the money, better, they have a big thank you to the Egyptian, because they're the ones that brought the fact that the, the waterfall was gonna quit running in a short time, so.
Yeah, I mean, if you're referring to Stagecoach and Glidden, yes. The other projects, I think, were in consistency with the money we've already spent on public safety and AGN. And I mean, we all knew where we were at with the money. I mean, we've been approving it as we've been going along. Alderman Favor, anything? No? Not trying to call you out. Okay. So the question, the question before us then is, what? Oh, Alderman Smith, sorry.
Sitting here listening to everybody, and actually, I've had a lot of comments about it. I think, as we look at the big doll, the dollars here, there's three hundred and fifty thousand, which really doesn't go a long ways in a lot of projects. I think we have to hit the biggest need at the moment, but like Alderman Larson said, we also have to contain, Alderman Verbic, I believe, we have to consider the rest of the town as well. So we're gonna have to kind of, I think we need to start moving around the different wards on some of the projects in a similar scenario. You know, I voted for the Egyptian at the other, the last meeting, and I will tell you, I got hit really hard with a lot of, don't give them any more money. I'm torn on that one. I really am. Because then I had quite a few say yes, you know, after I settled down, or they settled down. Stagecoach, no one was second, they were ready to give them the money right away, which I didn't quite understand why one and not the other, but I'll let you guys in the business just decide how that, you know, I'm sure there's people that go to both places. The Glidden-Hom- Barn, that's been a legacy in DeKalb. That's really important to us. I think it's on the historical register, correct? So I, yeah, it is. Okay. So I like this idea, you know, it, it's not a lot of money. It's not gonna go- So I like this idea, you know, it's not a lot of money, it's not going to go a long way. And so I think down the road, the city will be in better shape and maybe be able to hit some other projects. But like everybody said, there is a big issue with safety up in any Glidden north. And so I think I'm for this, like Alderman Morris said, I am for the package as presented. And I'm hoping that any Greenbrier Road will fit into CBD monies down the road, but Joanne will be the one to, I think, work that out for us, so that's it, Mayor.
Okay. This is why I pause and wait. Any other questions or comments?
So, one second. So to clarify, my position, my position is still the same as it was the last time when we were here. I don't think there's any rush to push forward with anything right now. There's a lot of needs out there. It's not a question of whether one is not deserving, they all are. But if you look at the list, we've got twice the amount of requests that we have available. So it gets to be a question of what do you feel is the most? And like I said, my position is still the same as what it was. In the last few weeks, we've had numerous things that have come up since then. So I'll stick with where I was the last time.
Okay. So the, the, yes, Alderman Smith.
Alderman Perkins, so you're really just saying, just to table it at the moment, then? Let it, see how it plays out, is that?
I guess it's what's, is the question, am I supportive of all of this on the list? No, I'm not. I'm not supportive of everything that's on the list. You know, I think there's some things that I would rather see the monies go in different directions than what's on the list.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
So kind of if we table it, I mean, because it's either, is it yes, no, or table? Is that our choices as a council?
We're talking right now.
Okay, so, I mean, that'd be the first question. And the second question is then all the money just held, all 349,000 just held and then voted on specifically to come out of that 349,000? That it just doesn't get used without the council's vote? Would be my next question.
I guess for me, and from what I'm hearing, I think we could probably approve half of these projects right now, and I bet we'd get a majority of the council that would be for it, especially when it comes to the community center, transit stop, street lighting, things like that. Those are things I think we all at our core agree upon that are important, and they're in line with what we've been focused on heavily. You mentioned alignment or balance, you know, and you mentioned Alderwoman Larson that AGN has been not, not focused on like it should have been for a number of years. And this is one way we can bring balance. We could look at balance of the downtown road diet that was spending money in downtown. The economic development on the south side is substantial in many ways, and including the, what do they call it, road furniture? What's the road furniture? Yeah, the road furniture on Fairview.
Road, traffic calming, I think.
Traffic calming, okay, traffic calming on Fairview.
I hope there's no furniture on there.
So I think, I think we've focused throughout this city, monies. We're specifically talking about ARPA right now, and where do we want to dedicate those funds? For me, you know, we've got our city manager who has worked diligently multiple times on this. We've had a bunch of meetings on this, especially when it comes to the Egyptian Theater. You know, we're fairly divided on this. If we decided to let this wait, I think we're just going to spin more wheels and potentially just waste more time, is what it comes down to for me. I'm not in agreement with everything on this list as well, and I haven't changed my opinion in any way, shape, or form based off of how I expressed my feelings at the last meeting. But ultimately, I'd like to put this to bed and just move on. We have so many, real quick, we have a lot of things that we're tackling in the city that are consuming an inordinate amount of our city manager's time, our city staff's time, my time and council's time that are of absolute need. There's a whole community out there that needs us to lean in and lean in hard to bring equity to our community, and that's what I want to get to. I want to get to the work of that. I want to get to the work of economic development. I want to get to the work which is going to benefit every organization that we've talked about. What we've been doing in the city, in this council, what we have been doing the last couple of years is important work, and it's been substantial. And I want to make sure that we can continue doing that. This is detracting staff, it's detracting us, and it's causing turmoil that, quite frankly, I'm just tired of. I would rather just put this thing to bed. We vote on it, the package presented by the city manager, put a bunch of time coming up with this and prioritizing it, and then we can move on to city business. So that's where I stand on this. Yes, Alderman Verbic.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve 250,000 in ARPA fund spending on number one, incentivize community center in AGN. Number two, upgraded transit stop on Blackhawk. And number three, upgraded street lighting and cameras in AGN, leaving us a balance of 100,000 that could be, sit, you know, sit for evaluation over time. And I would ask for a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, so there is a motion to approve those four, four items, was it?
Three.
Three? It was community center, transit, street lighting?
Lighting and cameras, yes.
Lighting and cameras, okay. So there's a motion to approve those three items, and there is a second. If we vote on that and that wins, are you saying we should have a second vote on the other then? Or we, is your vote just disregarding the other for a later date?
It's up to other council members to make motions as they see fit.
For me, just to clarify on that, I would be against that because again, I want to, I want to put this, this to bed. So there is a motion, there is a second. Any comments or questions before I call, roll call on that? And procedurally, John, our city manager, we're, currently have one thing before us on the floor. Now there's been a motion for a second. Is that procedurally, we can do that, or do we have to back out?
Well, I've only made a recommendation, that's so much air. Now there is a motion on the floor that takes precedence.
Okay. Alderwoman Morrison.
So when you said it needs to be spent, City Manager, by 2024, is that January 1st, 2024, or December 31st?
December 31st.
Any other questions or comments? Alderwoman Larson.
I support you that I think we ought to try to get, get this whole thing done. I know it's taken up a lot of Bill's time, and so my vote would be.
A lot of everyone's time.
Yeah, to support this, to just be, because in the scheme of 10.4 million dollars and the amount of his time and our time versus really a paltry 349,000, I'm sure this is, this is taking up too much time. So my vote is to get, to just vote it, figure we all like it one way or the other, and then be done.
We have to do roll call on this, though. So Alderwoman Morrison, hang on, City Manager.
I agree with Alderwoman Larson's statement. Further, I want to point out the time value of money. And so when we choose to spend it now versus a year from now, its value today is much greater than it is next year.
City Manager.
Two things. First, my time is your time. The second, and to the point of the discussion tonight, every one of these proposed targets has a dollar assigned to it that exceeds my spending authority. So everyone could individually come back to you if there was no package. And the package before you is, is a half of it, a little bit more. But each one of these could come back incrementally, and then we could be back to the same debate. So all I'm saying is, I'm not arguing for or against, I'm just putting this out there so you know whether you, whatever you do with this motion, and if there is another motion, we have to consider that I'm going to probably be bringing back other things to you, and it'd be good to have some settlement.
For me, if this motion fails, I'll ask for a motion to approve the whole package and going forward. So any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
No.
Morris?
No.
Larson?
No.
Smith?
No.
Mayor Barnes?
No. Motion fails. All right, so we have, well, I guess now I would accept the motion to, accept the package in full, the 350,000, which would spend the remaining ARPA funds on the projects presented to us by the city manager. I'd take a motion to bring that to the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morrison, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Verbic?
No.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
No.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Five yes?
Motion passes. Anyone that was here for that item, you're welcome to leave at this point. All right, moving on to agenda item K resolutions. Number one, resolution 2022-110, authorizing the purchase of equipping of one Ford Expedition and one Ford Explorer through Mauro Brothers Ford for the DeKalb Fire Department in an amount not to exceed 121,870 using ground emergency medical transportation, GMT funding, Fund 130. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor? So moved. Second. Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Perkins, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The Fire Department has gone out and received bids for replacement vehicles, for two frontline staff vehicles. The state purchasing contract is in play here. Mauro Brothers, who we've discussed in recent months for purchases of police vehicles, once again offered the lowest pricing in our region. Both of these, one is a 2007 Tahoe that would be replaced, and the other's a 2016 staff vehicle. That, that staff vehicle, the 2016, might be held in reserve and not just traded in, but the first one would be traded in for whatever we can get for it. So this comes as a recommendation to you.
Council, questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2022-110 passes. I love how our Fire Department is teeing us up with a bite size as we move on to the next item. So number two, resolution 2022-111, authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding and awarding the purchase of one Rosenbauer King Cobra 101-foot platform truck in an amount not to exceed 1.6 million using ground emergency medical transportation funding, GMT Fund 130. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So, second.
Moved by, was it Alderman Smith? Oh, Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City Manager, take your time explaining this one to us.
I will. As a matter of fact, I have a short video to show you as well, but not yet, Jeff, not yet.
You guys are serious.
So the, the platform truck, as opposed to an engine, we've talked about some engines here in the last year, but the platform truck is, I suppose, the aircraft carrier for the fleet of vehicles that we have. I don't have to explain to you that with the increase in a number of very large distribution centers, the high-rise buildings at NIU, and some of our senior living high-rises, not to mention what we do with the platform truck now as best we can when, say, a car, which happens about once a year, twice a year, ends up in a retention pond somewhere around town, you have to stretch it out so that we can get to the victims. Hopefully, they're not badly hurt, but we've had some, some serious calls. So we've used it for many things, but to replace the one we have, we have two right now, and, and one is, is over 30 years old, Big John. And Big John was purchased just before I started my first tenure. Wonderful truck, great ladder, chassis shot, but it has some value. The 2008 vehicle, interestingly, this isn't about Bill, but I have to tell you, I'm proud of these connections. So when I was at NIU, the argument was, could we get some assistance from NIU for the truck that is coming here as often as it's going in other places? And that was back in 2013, 2014, that period. And the Board of Trustees was willing to put some money toward that at the time. But that was a used truck at the time, because that's all we could afford. And I would say, without fear of, of this being contested, that but for the GMT Fund, we wouldn't be having this discussion tonight. The ground emergency, trans, ground emergency.
Medical?
Medical transportation fund budget, Fund 130. And why do we have that? Well, it has a lot to do with people standing up in blue. In the middle of 2020, when we were scratching for every penny and we had lots of reason to be concerned about just paying our bills and meeting payroll and so forth, through the initiative and resources of Local 1236, firefighters local 1236, we found out about, not a very publicized program, it's a federal program, to reimburse participating agencies, cities, municipalities, for that distance between what we are able to charge under the state Medicaid rules and what the, our actual out-of-pocket cost is, which could be upwards of 1,800 to 1,900 per call. And this is for the Medicaid patients being transported. And there's an increasing number of our patients who are receiving Medicaid. And we thought, well, that, that would help a little bit, a couple hundred thousand. Well, about 1.2 million in the first 12-month period this year, about, estimated about 1.5 million. We don't know, we, just to be very conservative, we estimated a little less than that this year, about 1,350,000 for FY '23, but it could be the same and in the following year. Eventually, with the pace, the steady pace of our calls and the fact that people are frankly taking advantage of the great talent that we have in our Fire Department for their medical needs, I think that's going to at least be level, if not going up every year incrementally. So we finally have the money to be making decisions like this. And this is not a frivolous decision. In the budget that we, we are going to, it's before you on first reading tonight, and in projections that we've done in the GMT Committee, which was set up as part of this, we are going to comfortably be able to address this in 2024. This truck would not be paid for until it's received, but we need a commitment now because the cost of it is going to go up. We are at the mercy right now of the, it's a seller's market in these types of vehicles, and we are facing, as in so many other areas, whether it's road salt or whatever, certain increases after January 1st. So I brought this to you after talking to Fire Chief Thomas and consulting with, with other members of the Fire Department. This seems like a smart play right now. We will have the money in 2024. When you count our, our balance now, our commitments that have been made looking forward, like the last engine hasn't arrived yet, so that's going to come after the first of the year, probably in February, and we'll have the money for that. We'll have the money to keep doing the things that we need to do. But there's been a wave of commitments that this council has made, and I'm very, very appreciative of that for Fire Department vehicle and equipment needs. Wish that we had a GMT for the Police Department and the Public Works Department. We don't. But since we have it, I think we have the opportunity to do some things now that are transformational and they're generational. What, now we're going to do a little video. I want you to see what, what science and application, practical application have done. We're not just talking about a boom that is going to be able to reach a long way, 100-plus feet, but it's articulated at the end. And what often happens when you get up on a taller building, there's a parapet, and so our arm is straight up in the air, now how are you going to? Even thinking about our firefighters accessing, you know, at the rappel down, and then how do you get the cot, and how do you get it up on the platform so we can get that down? This articulates down so it can sit on the roof. It can also go down to that retention pond driver and angle down so firefighters can get on. angle down so firefighters can get on the edge of that and pull somebody out. There are a lot of pluses to this. Jeff, are you ready? Coming soon.
The Rosenbauer 100-foot articulating King Cobra versus a traditional rear-mount platform. Today, we're going to show you why your Fire Department needs a Rosenbauer 100-foot articulating King Cobra. The firefighter is using the rear access ladder to enter the turntable. The other two firefighters are grabbing their tools and then will also climb the rear access ladder while holding their tools in hand and keeping three points of contact. You will also see a scenario where the firefighters are handing their tools to the firefighter at the top of the turntable, hoping that that firefighter will not drop the tools on their head and/or the ground to cause damage. This is the more traditional way of entering a rear-mount platform basket while carrying tools up the rear access ladder. Being able to articulate your aerial directly in front of the cab and make safe platform entry. Firefighters are carrying their tools. The aerial then will articulate down to the ground, and the firefighters will be able to make safe entry into that platform basket with tools. This will keep them from having to climb the access ladder at the back of the truck, then walk up the aerial sections with tools in hand and get into the platform basket. You can also see, this really reduces the amount of space needed to get the basket down to the ground at a fire scene. We all know how valuable space is at a fire scene. Another benefit is being able to bring a patient down to the ground directly in front of the cab and unload them right into the ambulance. Once again, this reduces the amount of space needed to get the platform basket to the ground. Platform baskets to the edge of the building, and the firefighters are securing the Stokes Basket over the edge of the building onto the platform. 100-foot articulating King Cobra allows you to go up and over onto the building to safely load that patient onto the platform basket and not load them on the edge of the building where it can be more dangerous. Platform is to the edge of the building, and the firefighters will then have to step over onto the roof, which can be a little more dangerous than coming up and over with an articulating aerial. Safely go up and over the edge of the building to make safe roof access. Unlike a traditional platform where the platform's at the edge of the building and can be a little more difficult to make entry and exit of the platform. Traditional platform, it is to the edge of the building, and the firefighter is having to sound out the roof as he walks onto it. The firefighters are then walking to where the ventilation is needed. This can be a little more difficult and dangerous for the firefighters versus having an articulating aerial. You can reach up and over directly where you need to do your ventilation and work safely off the platform and ventilate that building instead of being on the roof. Great features of the 100-foot articulating King Cobra is to safely go up and over those parapet walls to make roof access and not have to use your parapet ladder. This is a great feature of the 100-foot articulating King Cobra. The aerial is currently negative 12 and extending over a pond. And with the eight-foot jib, this allows us to get negative 20 feet below grade for any of your below-grade rescue operations or below-grade water suppression needs. For more information regarding the King Cobra, contact your Rosenbauer dealer today or visit us at rosenbaueramerica.com.
That last part is what made you think about the lagoon guy, isn't it?
Yeah.
I was thinking about fishing, actually. So that did a better job than I can do. And I think this is, this is a savvy and a good buy at this point. We have the means, we have, it's not going to deprive us of means, it's not going to exhaust our resources by 2024. And we saved some money upfront, 65, almost $66,000, which is probably about enough to outfit the new truck. So I heartily recommend this to you. I didn't, and I don't think any of us on the GMT Committee thought, three months ago, we'd be talking about this. But the opportunities come up, we're able to see where we're going to be, and it makes sense to do it now. Later on, it might be $2 million. So I think now's the time to do it.
Counsel, questions?
Oh, I might say, our 2008 has been out of service three months out of the last 12 months. So it's not going to last that much longer, and you know, we run it all the time.
That was a thumbs up. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2022-111 passes.
Thank you.
You know, when you get the thing, you're going to have to test it out, make sure it's, you know, safe, things like that. I'm happy to volunteer. I could be the victim, you know, throw me up on a roof, that'd be a lot of fun. In all seriousness, you all have done a great job of community pride on all your engines and ambulances. I've seen barbed wire, I've seen hashtag probably decal. I really hope when we outfit this thing, you continue that pride you have in the community and showing that visibly on this engine, because this is a pretty cool addition to the community. Last thing, so Northern's going to kick in?
We get to ask on Wednesday.
Yeah. And we will ask on Wednesday, because this is, there's not that many locations that really need something like this, and Northern is loaded with quite a few of those locations. So hopefully, there's the ability for us working together as two governing bodies, two taxing bodies, well, we're a taxing body, but two government agencies working together in order to purchase something like this for the Fire Department to make sure our citizens, including our students, are safe. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Pastor Mitchell, I apologize. To be clear, we did approve.
I heard you.
Yeah, so that's, that's pretty cool. Yeah, I wanted to make sure that-
I appreciate it.
Yeah, 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 that it's there, and if you want to leave, you can. I know you're insanely busy, so.
You know I've lived in this community for 40 years now.
Yeah. All right. Moving on to Resolution 2022-112, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for participation in the mutual aid box alarm system. MABUS? MABUS?
MABUS.
MABUS. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Smith. City Manager.
Well, this just extends the current system. It's indispensable. We use it on whenever there's multiple agencies responding. It helps us, we get to help others in the region, and it's worked very well for decades. But we have to do a contract periodically. This is a re-up. Recommend it to you.
Questions, comments? Hearing none. Roll call.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2022-112 passes. Moving on to number four, Resolution 2022-113, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Illinois Toll Highway Authority for emergency protection provided by the Decal Fire Department to the Illinois Tollway I-88 between milepost 87.6 and milepost 101.5 in the eastbound and westbound directions. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City Manager.
So the Illinois Toll Highway Authority recently updated their fee schedule, and we thought it was time to update our agreement with them. So that incorporates what they are willing to pay communities such as ours, which respond to accidents and injuries on the highway authority's property. And we have a stretch going east and west of our city limits, and figured now is as good a time as any to do that. So that's what's involved here.
Counsel, questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2022-113 passes. Number five, Resolution 2022-114, approving a bar, restaurant, liquor license for Class 6 LLC 214 East Lincoln Highway. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayors. Tom, any other-
Thanks, gentlemen.
Tom's not here tonight. Okay. So this is something a little bit different. The owner is going to be working with our billing department on some improvements that have to be made, but would like to get started in the process of going through the state system for the state license, and it always helps to have a local license first. It's really almost indispensable these days. So this is going to be a restaurant with very specific offerings, a charcuterie. I didn't learn that in French. Ruth had me practice that all day today. So you have a wine bar, you have food choices, and you can graze, and all will be well. So I think it's new, it's different, and we're happy that there's interest in our downtown, and we recommend your approval.
Counsel? Yeah, interesting, exciting option. So I wish them the best success. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2022-114 passes. Bill, you mentioned that if having local liquor licenses is important to get the state liquor license, outside of the background check and stuff that could cause them to not be approved at the state level, is it pretty much if we approve that we want this, the state's going to-
Generally, as long as all of our, we follow the state guidelines for the background and so forth. So we have to establish that, that goes with our license.
Yeah, right. That's good to know. All right, number six, Resolution 2022-115, approving a retail tobacco store license for Syrian Knights Hookah Lounge LLC at 811 West Lincoln Highway. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Roma's Hookah Bar closed in October. This new Hookah Lounge will be established within six months of that closing, and so we don't have to go back through a special use process. It'd be basically the same thing. So they're willing to pay the initial license fee and get on with it, so we recommend it.
Questions or comments, Counsel? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2022-115 passes. Number seven, Resolution 2022-116, appropriating motor fuel tax MFT funds in the amount of $3,149,000 for maintaining various streets and highways under the applicable provisions of the Illinois Highway Code, Section 23-00000-00-GM, from January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2023. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager.
Annually, we're required to pass a resolution of this type, estimating our total expenditures for the upcoming fiscal year for street, using the motor fuel tax funds that come from the state level, not the local, for various kinds of street maintenance. The chart at the bottom of page 14 in your background tonight identifies how that breaks out. Some of it would go to road salt and engineering services, and the street lighting, the electricity is used for street lighting and traffic signals, street supplies, and then street resurfacing. This year, the MST Fund, Fund 210, is going to pay the lion's share of the street maintenance. What's not shown here, and it's going to be paid out of other sources, is the money, a million dollars or so, the city will put into Peace Road improvements and other things. So our actual street maintenance program in broadest sense, not just in the sense that IDOT defines it, will be somewhere around $3.6 million this year, which is big. I mean, it's still asphalt, it's going somewhere, and it's going on well-traveled city streets. So in my mind, that's street maintenance for some reason. So, but this particular agreement is more specific to the MFT funds. Recommend your approval.
Counsel? City Engineer Gil, Peace Road didn't happen this year. High, 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 high probability next year it's going to be executed on?
Yes.
Awesome. All right. Hearing no other comments or questions. Roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2022-116 passes. Number eight, Resolution 2022-117, authorizing an agreement for preliminary engineering services with Fairgram and Associates LLC for the 2023 General Street Maintenance Program in an amount not to exceed $55,500. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As we all know from a lot of the work we've been doing on our city streets in recent years, there's a very important engineering component, and part of that is taken up with the design of the work that's to be done, and then the actual letting process that eventually comes to you through me and the city engineer. But just as important, and we sure saw this, had front row seat to it if you're at City Hall, this, if some of us were this summer, are the professional services for the construction inspection. And Fairgram has done a very good job over the years, and most especially here in the last 12 months, and we're recommending that they get the contract for the FY23 Street Maintenance Program.
Counsel, questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2022-117 passes. Number nine, Resolution 2022-118, authorizing five farm lease agreements for 370.6 acres of land at the Decal Taylor Municipal Airport for a period not to exceed 36 months. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman-
I have to recuse myself.
Oh, okay, sure. Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Wait a minute. So there's farmland that surrounds our municipal airport. Some are very large parcels, and there are some smaller parcels. And I'll just say, as I did in the background, that those smaller parcels, they're five acres or less, usually end up paying the price that comes out of the bid process for the larger parcels. So as you see in the chart on page 15, we're looking for the higher price, not the low price, for people who are going to lease and farm that land. And this year, a new entrant to this bidding process has entered and was really serious about getting the contract. So they bid up very nicely. That means that for the real small parcels, three or four or five acres, they're paying almost double, but it's not that much land. And the main reason those smaller parcels are getting farmed by different people is because it's adjacent to their farm holdings, and it just makes sense for them to do it. Nobody else was going to bid on it. So this is a nice package we do every year, or every so many years. And this year, Northern Tier Farm Partnership was a high bidder, and the process was properly conducted, and we recommend their price.
Counsel, questions, comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Resolution 2022-118 passes. Moving on to ordinances, second reading. Ordnance 2022-061, authorizing the 2022 levy and 2023 collection of taxes in and for the corporate and municipal purposes in special service areas of the City of Decal for tax year 2022. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayors. We do every year. We want to be very transparent- Thank you, Mayors. We do every year. We want to be very transparent about this levy process. It's important to the Council and also to our staff. And the very, the meaty conversation began in mid-October before the Finance Advisory Committee with a staff proposal that the Finance Advisory Committee supported. And we brought that forward to the joint meeting of the Council and the Finance Advisory Committee on the twenty-first, when we were talking about the budget in general, and again, support by the Council and the FAC. That's a four percent increase in the city's portion of the levy, because this is an aggregate levy. As you saw at the last meeting in October, and as you see again now, or excuse me, in early November, as you see now, we are expecting a overall decrease, including the library levy increase, a decrease in the tax, aggregate tax rate of five point six four percent. The greater part of that is the city government's contribution to the reduction in the rate. So this is the second reading. We recommend your approval tonight.
Counsel? Just FYI, too, I emailed all of you before the meeting a copy of a letter City Manager Nicholas and I sent out to all the presidents of all the boards, as well as whether it's the executive directors, superintendents of every taxing body in the City of DeKalb, explaining our desire to see our tax rate go down to nine point five percent, and asking them to attend a series of meetings right after the turn of the year to have a discussion on how we all can come together and work towards driving that tax rate down, because the residents of our community have earned it essentially. So all that has started. You will see the body of the email, and you'll see the letter that we included with some of the details and descriptions around that. So I'm excited to now take this on the road. We have set the example. Kishawati Water Reclamation District has set the example. The DeKalb County Government has set the example. So there are other taxing bodies out there that believe we can do this and are working towards that. So I'm looking forward, hopefully, to get the support of all the taxing bodies to finally get us down to a tax rate we all can be comfortable with and competitive with. Any other comments or questions on this? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Ordinance two zero two two dash zero six one passes on second reading. Moving on, number two, ordinance two zero two two dash zero six two, abating taxes levied for corporate purposes of the City of DeKalb for the tax year twenty twenty-two bonds. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Favor, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. It's our common practice to abate the debt service levies immediately after their adoption, which we just did, except for that debt related to the two thousand thirteen library expansion project, which we pay out of the general fund. So this was before you. This is on second reading. We discussed this at the last meeting, and recommend your approval.
Questions or comments, Counsel? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Ordinance two zero two two dash zero six two passes on second reading. Moving on to Agenda Item M, number one, ordinance two zero two two dash zero six eight adopting the annual budget, excuse me, of the City of DeKalb, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-three, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and the twenty twenty-three non-bargaining unit pay plan. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Favor. Is that correct? City Manager.
This comes to you on first reading only tonight. We've had a considerable amount of time spent on our annual budget, as we have in recent years, and I'm happy for that. Again, the levy has to be transparent. This certainly does. The levy is just one piece of the revenue stream, goes into our general operations. And the budget not only comprises those general operating fund expenditures, but also many other funds, twenty-eight other funds, twenty-eight total, twenty-nine total. And we are pleased that we had an opportunity to go over the budget with the Finance Advisory Committee. We've been talking about the budget really since some of the assumptions and challenges before us fiscally since last March, when we did our brief upgrade to the financial plan. And then we came back in August with a joint meeting, and then went through an October meeting alone with the Finance Advisory Committee, and then back to you in November, where we went literally fund by fund through the budget. So I feel that, and I'm very pleased that we can say that all of these funds have appropriate balances and are within our financial policies in terms of suitable reserves. I'm happy for the participation we get every year from our staff, department heads in particular, and our finance department, and most especially Kerry Dittman this year, who was a big help in helping pull all this together for us. And so I think it reads well. I think there's more detail in it this year, but also some more graphical representations of how we receive our funding and how we spend the money that comes our way, and gratefully, obviously, to those who contribute locally. So at this point, I recommend, strongly recommend first reading only, and we'll bring it back on the twelfth of December for final reading.
Counsel, Alderman Perkins.
Compliments to you and the staff on preparation of that document. I encourage anyone who's interested in a little light reading
Not to read.
To have a look at it, because it really does tell the story, you know? And it provides a tremendous depth of understanding where things are going and why things are going.
Thank you very much.
You don't need to have a CPA to understand it, so great work.
Thank you.
So you joke light reading, but you actually made it kind of light reading. Absolutely, so.
That's our objective.
Yeah, it was great. And Finance Director Dittman, for Bill to relinquish control over the numbers and the displaying of them, it's high praise for your capabilities.
I didn't entirely relinquish.
I know you didn't entirely.
Say I shared.
It stops. It stops. All right, any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Hearing none, roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Ordinance two zero two two dash zero six eight passes on first reading. Nice job, staff. All right, number two, ordinance two zero two two dash zero six nine authorizing an easement agreement for reserved parking of a portion of the east side of North Ninth Street, American Commercial LLC. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderwoman Larson, City Manager.
What's before you is follow through for the decision that the Council made with the staff recommendation back on October tenth to approve a development agreement with American Commercial, which is an affiliate of American Marketing. And what this does is to spring forward an easement agreement, which we had discussed, for parking on North Ninth Street that allows for parking in our Parkway in a perpendicular fashion, which more than doubles the amount of parking that is available for employees of American Marketing. Since they will not, with the vacation, which will come back to you at the next meeting of Locust Street, East Locust Street, will not have that for parking going forward. So we recommend your approval.
Counsel? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Ordinance two zero two two dash zero six nine passes on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two two dash zero six nine. Thank you for working with us throughout this process. Yeah, please come up to the mic. Yes, absolutely.
Just to compliment everybody in the room, you know, I've sat through a lot of municipal and county meetings over the years. You guys run a tight ship, and it's all business. It's just, it's great to see local government work like this, and we appreciate everything you guys are doing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we appreciate, as I was mentioning, your help through this. This is private sector, public sector, trying to work together, figure out what's best in everyone's interest. So appreciate all your time, and in no way, shape, or form do you have to stick around. We don't take offense if you leave after your item's been here. You've been here a while, sir. You betcha. All right, moving on to number three, ordinance two zero two two dash zero seven zero authorizing a zoning map amendment from the NC Neighborhood Commercial District to the PD dash R Plan Development Residential District, and approval of a preliminary development plan for one forty-five Fisk Avenue, Fisk DeKalb LLC. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Smith, City Manager.
Oh, Jeff's on the ball. Thank you. I am going to speak to this, I should say at the outset that John Saucer, who is the contract purchaser and developer contracted COVID from his family over the weekend. He's blaming his family. He wants to be here, but is unable, and maybe he's watching. But this is a project that you've heard about. It's been before the Plan Commission. It came before the Planning and Zoning Commission initially in April to gather the sense of the neighborhood, basically, and whether they would like this. And there was some give and take, and it led to some adjustments in the site development, and also some assurances with respect to privacy going forward with the adjacent neighbors on Fisk Avenue. A couple of things, and I want to thank also members of our staff, Dan Olson, Zach Gill in particular, for working on this site, not just from a zoning standpoint and say, stormwater retention standpoint, but traffic. So it's a site that receives the inflow of traffic going northbound on First Street, down Sycamore Road, in a blur many days, trying to get to, over to the extension as Fourth Street winds around the old St. Mary's Cemetery. So people are, they feel they've made the light, they make that right, which is almost always green, and they're flying. So we, there was no way that, even if we hadn't, they hadn't done a traffic study, and they have, where you could do a left turn out of that site. So it's gotta be a right in, right out. That was something that we went back and forth. If it had been someplace else, it might not have been such a big deal. But that led to conversation also about access from Fisk, and then the impact that that might leave on Fisk Avenue, which is one way, as you know, going eastbound there. So that engaged also the neighborhood in conversation, and ultimately, we got to a level of assurance on that, and that was important. Also, the stormwater retention, how could that be done? We've got a lot of paved surface there in the backyard, which now mostly grass, not all of it. There's, there was a parking lot there before that is sort of bleached through still. Scraped some of the weeds away, and you can see it, but obviously, it has to be updated. But that was another factor in this, and then ultimately, how the layouts would be inside. So as I say in the background, the short, the facts are these. There would be thirty-two different apartment units, nine two-bedroom, twenty-three one-bedroom. The one-bedroom units would be approximately six hundred fifty square feet. The two-bedroom would be about nine hundred square feet, which is pretty competitive of what we're seeing in that neighborhood as well. The comprehensive plan identifies, the one that was just recently approved by the Council, identifies this as high-density residential because of its location in relation to other high-density residential. So that brings us to the question of the density. The proposed density here is twenty-two and a half dwelling units per acre. It's obviously a smaller site. The building itself can easily absorb the thirty-two units, but it's on a tight site, so a lot of this is built on the site, not a lot of green space. So what about that? How does that compare with some of the adjacent properties? The one oh eight Fisk Avenue is twenty-eight and a half dwelling units per acre, so larger. Five hundred six North First, twenty-nine dwelling units per acre. Four hundred seventeen to four twenty-seven, First Street, North First Street, twenty-three units per acre. The Arista residences, Isaac Suites, and so forth, mostly in that range or higher. So, but in this particular location, you can see, I don't have a pointer, but yeah, there we go.
Jeff's doing a great job back there.
Great job. You can see the properties to the south and to the west, and they are in the same range or larger in terms of, or denser in terms of the density per acre. The, one of the other considerations, well, what's that building gonna, what are you gonna do to the building? It's solid, it's built, it's got great bones, it's built pretty solidly. Originally, it was a masonry building, as you can see by this elevation. The masonry will be retained. It will look as it's shown here, which is about how it looks now, except a lot cleaner in this rendering. Inside will be, would be modern in the sense that there will be, there are broad hallways inside. There will be some common space that people will be able to use, mailroom, the space for visitors and so forth. So there were some waivers to the UDO. I've identified them, the dwelling units per acre. But again, that was something Planning and Zoning Commission didn't have a particular problem with after the conversation with the neighbors. The setbacks along the west property line, so they're asking for a slight waiver on that. They would be as close as about three feet. There's a five-foot parking setback. But the parking is more rational, as represented in the schema that you see here in the plot plan. And the Planning and Zoning Commission and the neighbor thought that that was a reasonable way to use the site. The Planning and Zoning Commission did hold a public hearing on this for a final opportunity for the neighbors and for any interested parties to come forward. There were very few that, at that point, were commenting on it. And only four commissioners were present, but that was a quorum, and they voted unanimously in favor of recommending this to you. And we recommend it to you tonight.
Counsel, questions? Counsel? Alderman Verbic?
Bill or Dan, whoever could help, since Mr. Saucer's not here. In the backup, it refers to active management. So I'm sure Mr. Saucer's keenly aware of the challenges we've had since my first election in twenty seventeen. Can either of you describe what active management means? Is that someone living on-site? Or is that just daily check-ins, supervision, that kind of thing?
I'll let Dan address that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Saucer, he indicated that security would be a big factor here, so active management is local management. I don't know if he'd be living on-site or not. He didn't mention that. But somebody would be visiting daily.
Okay.
All the security measures in place, security cameras, you know, doors, you know, separate mailroom, separate from the rest of the public traffic. And I think it's just more of awareness of the site and having some management close by or on-site every day to watch it, because security was a big issue, there's a lot of nuisance problems there now, and the neighbors are very comfortable. I think it's the best option for this particular building, to have apartments in there and a local developer that's proven that, a track record that they can run a good operation apartment complex, so.
Great, thank you.
Alderman Favor?
Yeah, I would, I'm certainly in agreement for, in favor of approving this. I think if you look in the backup information, I think there's comments from the neighbors. I think there, again, there were a few concerns about the fence or parking lot, people walking across property lines. But in general, this is a great use for a building that's sat vacant for quite some time, and I think it's an easy time, and I think it's an easy, great project in DeKalb.
Alderman Perkins?
So to clarify, looking at the map here, then, the entrance effectively would be the one-way on Fisk, right?
One-way, so that's in and out, and there's one way on, there's a right in, right out on Sycamore Road.
Okay.
Yes, you can't go left there.
Right. There has to be a built curving there to highly discourage. Does that mean that somebody won't try to go, probably, can't say it won't ever happen, but it would be, they would be foolish to try.
But they're both one-way, one-way in and then one-way, one-way in and one-way out.
Going east.
Going east, yeah.
So you can go in and out. Sycamore is a right-in, right-out. And it was moved further away from the intersection, because it was just too close currently right now. But that would be restricted to right-in, right-out only.
Okay.
And one of the reasons for the proximity to that west boundary line is they had to have a wider driveway there just to allow that in and out.
Alderman Smith?
Bill, would there be any, I know the right-turn arrow is on all the time on the Sycamore Road from First. Is that going to be an issue for, are we going to have to start to throw it out there? But.
I'll defer to our city.
Yeah, that's why, he needed some work tonight, so.
He said one word, which is yes, which is good.
Well, I always throw the tough ones at him, so.
There wasn't a plan to alter that. I mean, the traffic study didn't really require any offsite, but it doesn't mean that we couldn't monitor that. And if we need some sort of gap tolerance in there, we could change that sequence on that.
Okay. Thank you very much. You're asking why, because I go that way, like, a lot.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Ordinance two zero two two dash zero seven zero passes on first reading. Can I get a motion to waive second reading?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Any other questions or comments on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Ordinance two zero two two dash zero seven zero had second reading waived. All right, moving on to agenda item N, Reports and Communications. Alderwoman Morris, you want to kick us off?
No report.
Alderman Smith?
No report.
Alderman Faver? Alderman Verbic?
No report.
Alderman Perkins?
Compliments to you guys' work for getting the downtown all dressed up. Looked fantastic tonight, no way in.
Alderwoman Larson?
No report.
For me, just a couple of quick things. Did a ribbon cutting for Michael's for the DeKalb Chamber. That was always fun. That's when I get to do the Disney princess thing, a part of my job. But it's also, it was really cool. They were very proud of an addition that they had, that they've been able to open up, which is a bunch of classes they're going to be able to give, and they haven't had it open since COVID. So that was just really neat. Also attended the Northern Illinois Mayors Association. That was in Sublet, Illinois. Anyone know where Sublet, Illinois is? Do you, yeah? Okay. That was, that was a, that was a drive. Yes, exactly. But it's a great group where there's probably about twenty or thirty mayors that usually show up from all over northern Illinois. And we exchange ideas, get to know each other, but also they usually have some guest speakers. Com Ed spoke, representative from, I can't remember the senator's name, because he doesn't represent us, but his team was there. And then also someone from the Department of, Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity? DCEO, yeah. They were there, so it was, it was really informative and it's something I appreciate and like going to. And then also I was on TD Ryan's radio show, which is always a lot of fun, because I never know what he's going to ask me. And we can have a great back and forth sometimes. But overall, with the holiday, it was a pretty slow couple of weeks, but fun couple of weeks. City Manager, you got anything to report?
Just one quick thing, and is Andy still here? But in behalf of Public Works, the weather has invited people to continue to put leaves out. This is the last week. We are going to be done. And we're about a week past what we normally do, but the weather, again, has allowed the last leaves to come down and I'm happy that people are getting them up. But we advise people, don't try. We are eventually going to get snow and then we'll have the combination of snow and ice and all of that ending up on your yard or in your driveway, and that won't be good. So we appreciate the cooperation. People have been very good this year in how they rake things to the curb, they're not just throwing it into the street, they're keeping it on the parkway. Keeps the gutters free and it's much easier to pick up. So thanks to our residents and just a word to the wise that one last shot.
I've had fun with some residents that, you know, are complaining about they don't come by quick enough, when are they going to come by, this, that, the other. And I remind them all, I think we have three hundred and forty road miles in the city of DeKalb, or lane miles. I don't know how many road miles that equates to, but it's a lot. And if you've watched the street sweepers or the street cleanup, or the leaf cleanup guys, they walk it with rakes and shovels. So it takes them a while to get around the community, but I think it's a pretty cool feature. And I think I've mentioned this before, I was in Springfield last fall and I couldn't[1734.94]